So.
All right.
Why that my.
A like.
Yeah.
Give her that feedback. You told her about the.
Yep, yeah, I think she said she.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that. That one A. We have Darlene.
She says. But she could probably. She knows.
That was a leaving. Are they both? Your mics. Right, we're good, okay. Good evening, welcome to tonight's Monday, November 3rd, 2025, 7:00 PM, regular meeting of the Arinda City Council. We have assisted listening devices in the back of the room for anyone who needs them. I will now ask our clerk to call the roll call.
Okay, Councilmember G.
Here.
Councilmember Hoxey.
Here.
Councilmember Riley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Iverson.
Here.
And Mayor Malkani.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on our agenda is to adopt the agenda. Do we have any changes to tonight's agenda?
Honorable mayor members of the council, we do not have any changes to the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion then to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that passes unanimously. That takes us to items D, which is items for the good of the city. We don't have anything listed tonight. That doesn't mean there aren't many things going on for the good of the city, but we have nothing to discuss. Item E is public forum. The public forum provides an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item within the jurisdiction of the city council that is not on the agenda. Additionally, a speaker has the option of addressing the council on an item listed on the agenda if that speaker will not be present when that agenda item is taken up. And we have two speaker cards here for public forum, and so I will call them now. And the first is Keith Erickson.
I think you'd be the opportunity. I want to talk to you about the wildfire abatement process and Southwood Valley. According to the abatement requirement, all property owners are required to comply with exterior hazard requirements. It's your responsibility and it's the law. So for property over one acre, as this one is, a fuel break of 100 feet shall be created and maintained around the entire perimeter of the parcel. So that fire break requires grass to be cut less than three inches, non-irrigated bushes to maintain space, two times, four times, or six times the height of the shrub, removal of all combustible material, removal of dead, diseased, dying trees, and trim the trees to create six feet of vertical spacing between the ground. So we all maintain abatement at our houses, and we're all good neighbors except for the people in Southwood Valley. They've done nothing. Based on the abatement requirement, a person should be able to walk around the entire perimeter of Southwood Valley without grasses or weeds hitting higher than their ankles, without having to weave and push between shrubs, without having to duck under branches of live trees, or to climb over dead ones. If you've seen the valley, that is impossible. After the previous development proposal failed, I thought it was an unbuildable abandoned property. However, Mr. Liu came to the meeting and said that they have plenty of funds. They were willing to spend up to a million dollars. Great, so he has the money, he can clean up his property. He's not a neighbor, he's an outsider who ignores the rules and is trying to force the city to accept his interpretation of the general plan for his personal benefit, but has yet not met his legal obligation to maintain his property and keep us all safer in the event of a fire. Regarding the general plan, even Google AI shows a 2006 application for residential subdivision in Southwood Valley was considered, but it would require a general plan amendment to move forward. According to the planning director, Southwood Valley is pushing to move forward without a general plan amendment by seeking waivers and concessions. At this point, it's not about the general plan, waivers, or concessions, it's about the owner meeting his legal obligations to mitigate fire risk by following abatement requirements. The city of Arinda should halt all work on this proposed development until the basic legal safety requirement is met and satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Erickson. Next, I have a speaker card from Chris Neal.
So, good evening. I'm going to talk a little bit about one subject, and that is grading issues and imported fill. And if you refer to the little diagram I sent out, I'll wait to get that. Just for kind of conceptual understanding of what we're dealing with here, the Southwood Valley, of course, we know is 43 acres, of which 10 acres can be developed, the other 33 acres are to remain as is. Now, just to give you a sense, it's about a half a mile long. And it's about 300 feet drop in vertical depth, okay? So you get a sense for that. So I went to one of the reports, and it's referred to down at the very bottom there. And the grading plan says there's going to be a cut of 60,000 cubic yards, okay? We're going to cut out 60,000 cubic yards, and that's to shape the valley. All right, cut 60,000 cubic yards. Okay, and then we're going to rearrange that cut so that we're going to have about a fill. Oh, I got it backwards here. No, I don't, no. They're going to fill about 85,000 cubic yards, okay? 85,000 cubic yards. So the net fill we're going to do, and this is per the current proposal, is about 25,000 cubic yards, okay? Everybody knows what a yard is, right? Three feet, what, three feet, not three feet. So we're going to have 25,000 cubic yards of fill, and if we have a large dump truck that's about 15 cubic yards, then we're going to have about 1,700 delivery trips of up the roads in Arinda, 1,700 dump trucks to put all this fill in the valley, okay? And that's, that's assuming we've got pretty large dump trucks of 15 cubic yards, okay? So again, we're going to have 1,666, these are, you know, plus or minus 20% thereabouts, but they're using the basis of the drawings that, not mine. Okay, and so if we go back and forth, then there's like 3,300 trips back and forth. Okay, so to kind of picture this a little bit more, if you looked at a football field, that's 100 yards by, I think it's like 33 or 100, whatever it is, wide in the end zones, you'd need about 10 yards. I know you're going to.
Thank you, yes, you need to.
Very good.
Thank you.
We need to get the message across. Okay, did I succeed, hopefully?
Appreciate your public comment, thank you, sir.
If you would please put that in a minute, Sharon.
Madam mayor, could we ask staff a question about the other speaker?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask our city manager and our public work staff, if the property really has a situation where I would assume MOFD is, you know, possibly citing it or looking at it or whatever, could we follow up, or could we know whether MOFD? I mean, it's their jurisdiction to.
Yeah, it's.
Enforce everything that our speaker commented on, and I haven't been out there recently to like, look at it, but if, if it's really, you know, violating a lot of things, I would assume MOFD is dealing with it.
I would assume so as well, I can double check with them tomorrow.
I think that would be good.
I was wondering if. Just as, I think questions are okay, but we can't get into discussion because this item is not agendized.
Is it, I wanted to ask the question as to whether or not MOFD has been notified recently of the problems that the speaker spoke about.
I did send a message to MOFD about the property and left a phone call and got no response.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Erickson, for telling us that. Okay. Are there any other, is there anyone else who would like to speak during the public forum section of our agenda tonight? Seeing none, and having no other speaker cards, I will close public forum. That takes us to item F, which is our consent calendar. I have one request, but before that, do we have any changes to the consent calendar? And I'll look first to our city manager.
Staff has no changes to the consent calendar.
Are there any items that any council member would like to pull from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, and we didn't get any public comment on these items. I did want to ask for a separate vote on the consent calendar, and my understanding this, this would occur first on item F5, on the recommendations that are listed as items 1A and B on the agenda. Those two, item F5 is the housing element implementation, ordinance 2504, 2505, resolutions 5225A and 5225B regarding amendments to the general plan and zoning and adoption of objective design standards. The recommendation that I'd like to call for a separate vote on is item F5 1A and B, specifically for housing element sites outside the downtown. The recommendation is to A, waive the full reading and adopt ordinance 2504, and B, adopt resolution 52-25A. I would like a separate vote on that specific, those specific two recommendations listed as items 1A and B, because I want to recuse myself from that vote. In December 2025, my parents and I purchased a condo in Marimani Gardens in Maraga, which is across the street from Marimani High School. And because of this property interest, I've decided to recuse myself from the council's deliberations and decisions regarding any non-downtown sites. The condo is within 500 feet of Marimani High School property, but more than 1,000 feet from the housing element site on that parcel. But I'm recusing myself out of an abundance of caution and to underscore my respect for this process. So, and I'm just going to look to our city attorney to make sure that my request is consistent with appropriate procedure.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So.
So I recommend a motion on all consent calendar items other than F5 1A and B at this time.
Okay, do we need to take on the F5 1A and B first, or no? Okay.
You can do it second.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Okay, so all in favor of consent calendar items other than F5 1A and B?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, and now.
A question for the city attorney. Does the mayor need to physically recuse or just abstain from the vote since we're not discussing?
She's recusing from the vote, but because this is on the consent calendar, she doesn't need to leave the room.
Perfect. So I would like to then ask if we have a motion to approve F5 1A and B for the housing element sites outside the downtown?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does that need to be a roll call vote?
No, I count four votes in favor, none opposed, and one recused the mayor.
That's correct. Perfect, and with that, I will turn it back to the mayor.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. That brings us to our item G, public hearing, that we do not have a public hearing tonight, and that takes us to item H, policy matters. Item H1 is the sign committee recommendation, an update on the project and request to rebrand from the Crossroads Mini Park to Crossroads Plaza. And with that, we'll hear first from staff.
Good evening, city council, I'm Scott Christie, Public Works Director. Would like to go through this item on the Crossroads Park, and I do have a little slideshow here of sorts. So this is a view just from street view of, oh, 2022 or so. It's around the time when we did some replanting at the site and a few upgrades, but after some significant tree removal. Now, this project, by way of background, it's located at the intersection of Camino Pablo and Berkside Road, right in front of the Theater Square Building. It's been on the CIP as a project for approximately 10 years. The property is a little bit complicated because it's on PG&E owned land, so one of the reasons for the delay was we were at a point where we had to renegotiate the lease with PG&E. So the current term, 2021 to 2046, it's a 25-year lease. There's quite a few new, so to speak, changes that were made in the agreement, specifically tree height is limited to 10 feet, signage and art can't have metal, no metal, more or less, on the site. No benches are seating, they don't want people congregating, mainly because of the high voltage transmission lines, which are supported by a tower right there on that property, which is the whole reason why PG&E owns it. Now, here's a view from 2018, similar to the last view, but then this is prior to PG&E, well, actually, I think the city had to do quite a bit of the tree removal. But anyways, you can see there was quite a few tall redwoods that were out of compliance with this 10-foot rule, so it all had to be cut back significantly, which added to the need really for this project to make it more attractive again. Now, this is from 2023 or so, or, this one, actually, I'm sorry, this is really a pretty recent photo, within the last year. So it shows some of the plants that were added, like the shrubs, the New Zealand flax have grown up. There's no trees there really of note within that property itself. You can see there's the signal poles in front, and then the PG&E tower that's supporting utility lines sort of in the foreground also. The current project scope then, we've had quite a few meetings over the past few years, and in order to reduce the costs and meet various other directives from council, we, we did away with a complete revamp. Originally, the project called for completely removing hardscape and landscape, redoing the fountain with some other rock features. It was a pretty expensive project when you add all that in. We revised that now to just include removing the landscape, which is more or less shown in green there. The fountain and all the hardscape around it stays. The only hardscape we remove is in front of the, right on the curb side, you'll see there's, there's no sidewalk. Currently, there's, there's a sidewalk there that goes around the curb return. We've removed that just to, again, give us more room for planting, direct to pedestrians just one way through the fountain and then out to the sidewalk on Camino Pablo. The, the other thing of note is we do show the monument sign sketched in kind of a dark brown there, it's where the current proposed sign would, would be located. Let's see, I think I'm going backwards. So there, going back in history a little bit, there's the so-called fin sign from about 2017, 2018, before we had some of these PG&E requirements. The intent at that point was to make the sign out of a weathering steel, and sort of it has a fin shape, you'll note, it says, "Welcome to Arinda," and that's what we had, and people liked it, but then we found we couldn't really do that, so we looked at different ways to go with that fin sign. We looked at a lot of other signs, as you may recall. But as a result, we ended up with the ad hoc sign committee, consisting of council member Riley and Vice Mayor Iverson, and so we worked closely with them. We retained a sign company that's very experienced in both city monument signs and commercial signs, to just see what can we do to match that sign or others. We all had a good joint discussion with that. We ended up really coming with granite as the most appropriate sign material, so we were looking at basically a half-inch-thick granite slab. Mind you, this sign's about 20 feet long and three and a half feet high or so, it's on top of a concrete base, but the granite then would be cemented on to a concrete wall backing that you can't really see from the front. And then we looked at different styles of granite colors, and then different sorts of lettering. Again, the challenge with the lettering is, it can't be metal, but there are some good ways to make it appear like metal. So this is the recommended sign, and it, again, it, it kind of matches the intent of the fin sign in terms of shape. The lettering's probably changed a tad bit, again, with arrow signs, recommendations on size, we kind of went with that, and the committee liked this a lot. It's, again, the color of the granite, you could say is kind of like the weathering steel. Here's a few other variations, the same sign shape, but differences here in the font. Here's a few other variations, the same sign shape, but differences here in the font and style of the lettering. And, and these are all in your packet too. And then this one is a darker, different type of, not really different type of granite, mainly just a different color granite. In this version, it shows "Welcome to Arinda" in sort of a gold brass color. Then in the next version, we have it, it pops a little better with a kind of a silver type color to the lettering. The lettering would be on standoff, so it would stick out, not in, but out from the sign. It would be attached to the sign, to the granite face. And here's a review of the schedule, just where we are now is we're basically at a point where we've got the signs under review by the city. We're just about ready to submit them all to PG&E for their review as required by the lease agreement, along with the sign itself in terms of content and materials and what it says. I, I don't think it'll be controversial, but they, they do that because if we did ever want to put city-sponsored art, they'd have a right to review that also. So then, assuming we get a fairly quick turnaround from PG&E, we solicit bids in December. January, we receive bids, award the contract, assuming we got acceptable bids. February, we could begin some of the initial parts of the construction. Again, with the timing, it makes sense to, you know, get all the grading, removal work done, get the sign installed by others, meaning Arrow Sign, we'd have an agreement with them to furnish and install the sign only, including the lettering. And then we'd come in and do the planting. So that way, we'd, we'd not trample everything when we do the other work. And there's also electrical work for lighting, spotlights onto the sign, lighting for the trees, pathway-type bollard lighting and so forth, and then irrigation. And then to go through the cost estimate, this just shows the current budget amount, $345. The design work for fees for the landscape architect and so forth would add up to about $30,000 out of the current budget. It leaves around about $315,000, which does give us a pretty good margin for contingency and so forth, as I'm showing here. This details out what the demo and grading costs are estimated, $20,000. No hardscape replacement, so zero. Planting and irrigation together, about 125. You could say a little less than half of that's for planting, so maybe $55,000 in plants. We'd include in the bids kind of a breakdown, so we'd get a more accurate number. Electrical, $40,000, the sign foundation and wall. So the city as part of the main contract would install the foundation and the wall, the backing for this granite slab sign. And then the sign separately, as I mentioned, through Arrow, we're proposing to have them fabricate and install the sign, and that would be about $40,000. And then the subtotal contingency, it has a fairly healthy contingency right now because we, we're, we're not at bids, we don't have the PG&E comments back, if any, that may alter things. And then we have some construction administration costs in there for the landscape architect to do some review during construction. We, we propose doing construction management ourselves with city staff. Again, on the funding, as I believe I showed in the report, we have, from our capital improvement fund, we have about $265,000, park dedication fees, $30,000, or actually $60,000, including some carryover from last year. $50,000, other grants, which was to be Arinda Community Foundation. However, we just learned since the time we wrote this staff report that unfortunately they have dropped out and are no longer interested in supporting this project. However, the garden club has indicated a, a strong interest in providing funding. So I believe they will hopefully be able to more than make up for that $50,000 and contribute slightly more, although we've not completely verified that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure there's questions and also I don't know if any of, let's go with questions first and then if our ad hoc committee members want to also chime in.
Or do you want to let the ad hoc committee go first?
Yeah, I was gonna do that if that's okay. If, if you want to add to the, following the staff report.
Aren't we supposed to be doing questions?
Before that, since there's an ad hoc committee, you're allowed to present.
Well, I, I, um, I don't know if we wanted to, for the minutes, reference the Art in Public Places efforts for many years to do a sign and our, our decision not to use their suggestion and we're going through with, we're proposing something that's what came from far, like 2017. So I just wanted that chapter to be mentioned as well. And we are leaning towards this traditional streamlined, timeless design. And the lettering is a type of, uh, kind of pop-up metal-like, but it's actually vinyl that really pops, so you can see it. So we're very pleased with the appearance. We actually handled, touched the, the granite and we saw two, you know, you know how you get, get samples, two samples and the, like a lot of things that, that are photographed, that doesn't really represent what your eye sees. So this brown color that we're looking at and the gray color that we're looking at are not exactly what they look like to our eye. And then when I even took pictures of them in the office, it looked different from what the slab looked like. But this essence of the color is, to me, less red than what you see in what my eye sees tonight. It's more brown and it's granite in the sense that it has multi-colors in it to create the overall color. And the same with the gray. But the gray came off a little more dark and reddish-brown, a little lighter and, uh, and earthier and kind of blends, I really like it because it blends into the landscape. Okay, so that's how I would describe this and our thoughts. On the money side, I, I think we should, kind of in response to some comments, the sign cost is less than a third of the total costs and the sign cost is the 40 and the 20. And that number is like 50% of what it used to be. We have come way down, I think the last sign cost was 120, so we're now we're talking, you know, 60-ish. So that's a big deal. And in terms of the grants we can get, I confirm that the Arinda Garden Club has $60,000 in hand and is very eager to support the cost of the planting. So when that's precise, you know, that they want to cover that and they may be willing to cover more if you, we were encouraged to do some fundraising. And the fundraising could be from the community as well as from other garden club members. This $60,000 just came to us like that. So, um, you know, there's, there's real interest in making this happen after 10-plus years. Anything else?
I just wanted to make, council member, I had the samples in the back of the granite and then, so I brought it out to show your colleagues.
Yeah.
So they could see.
Yeah. And my comment would be now that this lighting is different from what the lighting would be in, in natural lighting, right? Yeah, so you all know that, but I just wanted to point it out.
It probably goes without saying that Councilmember Riley on the ad hoc was really involved and passionate about the lighting, the landscaping, how it all worked together. And I'm really proud of how the continuity from prior efforts and the way it works as a plaza and not just a landscaped median, which is a place that we were at for a minute. So nothing to add, but I was very pleased.
Okay, and I guess I do think of something else to add that's in the staff report that, um, that is, I, I don't know, I think it's part of, a nice part of the story. And that is that two garden club members who are master gardeners have been intimately involved with the planning and the design of the landscape and are given lots of input about the choice of plants and the placement. So that it's, we're integrating the appearance, the look of this, this entry with what's going on on the other side of Arinda, so that it's not so disjointed. And that's the intent.
Other questions? Yes, Councilmember G.
Okay, I have like three questions, I think. One, all of the existing planting is going to get torn out, right?
Seems like it.
Yes.
Good, because I think it looks horrible and I went and looked at it for a long time today. Two, um, we, we, we don't have anything though that shows us what's going to go back in as the planting, right? So, but I guess the question I, I mean, I have a lot of faith in the garden club, but I guess the question I would have is, at one time, we talked about making the planting very much a, a sort of a good showcase of, you know, fire-savvy kind of planting. And I was curious as to whether that's still part of what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah. Who's answering this?
I'll defer to you. But yes, we, we had good meetings and definitely that's a part of the intent is to be a showcase and use not just fire safe, but also water, you know, try to the extent we can to use drought-resistant plants, so we don't use more water than we have to.
I don't think this is going to be a demonstration garden, though. I think it'll have these fire-savvy plants. But the, the colors are going to be chosen to coordinate with the rest of the city that they've planted that are also drought-resistant and.
And that's one of my questions is, is it going to have some color?
Yes.
Because if there's anything that I find really disappointing with the plants that are there is they're very drab to, in my personal opinion.
Yeah, but like all gardens, they're going to go south and then three years and you're going to redo it. At least the, you know, the color part. Right, you'll have foundation plants and then color.
Yes, Councilmember Hoxey.
Will there be lights so you can see the sign at night?
Yes. There'll be spotlights on the sign, there'll also be lighting for the landscape areas to some extent.
And will the path be lit so it's sort of safe to walk at night?
Yes, there will be bollards for the pathway.
And consistent with our light up Arinda, the trees will be lit up?
Oh, that's good. So it'll be like a real entry to Arinda. It'll showcase Arinda and it'll be beautiful with fresh planting, but it, it won't be a congregating spot, it'll just be a, an, an entry, sort of.
Right. And all the developers are going to be knocking on the door.
We'll see. Okay, thank you.
Um, I had a couple follow-up questions and let's, you had some, I suppose, no, since you were on the ad hoc, I'm assuming. So the sign foundation and wall would be, that would be needed, I would assume, for any sign, right? I mean, because we were looking at different, not we, but that we were looking. And there is a certainly, you know, as you noted, Director, like a 10-year history around trying to make the sign a reality. And so a lot of folks over the years have spent a lot of time and looked at various other signs. And so I just wanted to understand, I guess I had two questions and they're kind of related, which is, or one is, because we got a public comment asking about what happened to the idea of the mosaic sign and whether that was investigated. And then the second is really a cost thing that that brought up, which is the, the cost of the sign here is, is listed for the granite sign as $40,000 and the sign foundation and wall as another $20,000. But I would, I would assume that any sign we would put in would need a sign foundation and wall?
Yes.
Okay, so, so really the cost of this granite sign is about $40,000, correct?
True.
Okay. So, uh, did we look at the, did we go back and revisit the mosaic sign? And if not, um, why, I guess?
We talked about it, but there are a lot of concerns with, we've learned with private art. I believe that was $50,000 and this is 40. And we don't know how that would, what the cost would have been to install that. And I, I, we don't know about the complication of mosaic installation versus granite installation and using metal to do it and we can't use metal. So we did not explore all the, the issues, but I think the stop, the stopping point was the sense that it was private or individual art.
Okay.
And the complications that our city manager talked about.
Yeah, I think at the last meeting when we discussed it, I think there was consensus among the council that pursuing it as a piece of public art was probably not the best approach, given that we wanted maximum flexibility to address issues. If it is a piece of public art, the maintenance of that sign takes on a different tone. The, the artist needs to be involved, there has to be a lot of coordination with them because it is a piece that they would have some say over how it gets addressed. So we knew that that would be a more complicating factor and that we, I think the feedback was, we'd love to look at other pieces of art, maybe that could be out there adjacent to this sign in the future, but maybe as a standalone piece or a pad for a piece of temporary art that we could put out there as long as we could meet the requirements of PG&E.
If I can just add a little color on the process, we actually backed all the way up to when we first formed the ad hoc. We did whiteboarding, we did like what signs in the whole big wide world do you like? What are good role models? So we really didn't just start with, do you like the red shoe or the blue shoe? We really said, what do we want? What are our goals and objectives? We looked at other things that had been considered and we very quickly, I think, came to an easy consensus. At the Finn sign that had been approved was, we thought, the best of everything we were looking at and was feasible. So the process went from, you know, big to narrow and we did consider.
Thank you. That actually answers the questions I had. And then the, the last thing is, just because someone brought it, again, going from the public comment, we got the welcome, "Welcome to Arinda." That, I've always thought we were going to have that. Remind me, was that part of our original, uh, the welcome to? Was that part of our original design or was that added through this process?
It was, it was there.
Okay, I thought so, but I just want to clarify.
It was there.
Okay.
But tonight, you, we could do anything we want.
Understood, I'm, I'm waiting for deliberate, or discussion later, I just wanted to clarify that. Because I recalled it, but wanted to remember. Um, any other questions?
Actually, I shouldn't have questions, but, um, I, um, when you went back to the 2017 in your presentation tonight, I realized that the font of Arinda in the 2017, when it was metal, had kind of an art deco, like a, a, an, I want to say like an accent in the lettering, where it had like little cutouts that was sort of elegant-looking, that we have lost in our current iteration. And I'm curious if it's, and I guess it would just be, yeah, if, if the acrylic lettering is able to have that kind of, that accent or that cutout, I would be interested in pursuing that. But I don't know if that, if that's something that we can consider or is that specific to the metal as a medium?
We'd have to ask Arrow Sign and just to confirm, you're speaking of, for instance, just in the Arinda lettering, the way it sort of has a 3D quality, maybe the.
That's correct, how like the O and the A, you can sort of see. Yeah, it's like a little, it's like a little slice in the lines that has, it gives it an art deco feel that our current lettering was not able to replicate. And so I just wanted to ask if that was a materials question or just a style question?
We, we'll ask the question of Arrow Sign.
Yeah, sure, Councilmember G.
Is the, I know there's a height limitation, but is the planting intended to include any trees at all?
In the back.
Okay, so it will have some smaller trees?
Okay, yes.
Can I ask one more question too? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Currently, there's some benches around the fountain, I think. Are those going to be left in place or removed?
Removed.
Removed.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not. If not, I want to open this item H1 to public comment. I want to note for the record that we got quite a bit of public comment that is in the communications received from the public packet that we all received and have had an opportunity to read. And I do want to thank all the members of the public who bothered to, to write to us. Is there anyone here who wants to make public comment at this time? Seeing none and having no speaker cards, I will then close public comment and bring item H1 back to the council for discussion. So I'm sure we all have a lot of ideas. Who wants to go first? Councilmember G.
I, I want to thank the ad hoc committee. I really appreciate the time and effort that you guys put into it. It's hard for me to believe, since I've been here the whole time, how long this has bounced around. But I, in, I, I think it's been, I think it's been looked at very thoroughly. I also think that there's been a great deal of effort made to, you know, minimize the cost and provide the value for the level that we're talking about funding. And I know that a number of the public feels that somehow this is not a worthwhile expenditure for the city, but I, I disagree with that. I think that it's very believable that the city, you know, should take a little bit more pride in the interest, in the entryways to our community. And quite frankly, as we look for people interested in developing in Arinda, people interested in, you know, creating housing and creating, you know, new spaces for us. Continuing to let that entryway look so sad, to me, doesn't seem like it is off base for us to be, you know, making it look much better. I think, you know, it's, I'm pleased with what we're proposing. I think it's a good balance between cost and what we're trying to achieve. And I think, you know, quite frankly, it's just gone on and on and on. And it's time to move forward and get it done. I think it would look quite nice and I think it would make a positive addition to the downtown.
Councilmember Hoxsey?
Sure. I, I also want to thank the committee and appreciate being able to actually see the granite and the materials even in poor light. It gives you a better sense of it. You know, this hasn't been something I've been involved with for many years, being new on the council, but I do think it's important that our city look presentable when you come off the freeway. And I, I am in support of moving forward with this plan.
And I, I couldn't agree more on all fronts, including gratitude to our ad hoc committee, who I think put a lot of time in this and also gratitude to staff because I think this is maybe, I, I don't even want to say if it's a fourth or fifth staff report we've had on this subject, but since I've been on the council. Anytime we are installing art, we can't please everyone, right? And, you know, there are, there are elements, I mean, I, I think part of the reason this has been so difficult, right? To pull the plug on is because there's, there's so many ways we could do this, right? And ultimately, you know, I think the way Councilmember G expressed it is, is how I feel, which is that, you know, number one, this entryway is a very, very, it, it is important because it is, you know, for some folks, the first thing they see when they come off the freeway. And so it's really, it is the welcome to Arinda. It is the entryway to Arinda. And so it's important to have beautiful landscaping. Most of the cost is not associated with the sign. It's actually associated with landscaping this area and having it be a sustainable, vibrant area. I do hope the landscaping, while not maybe being a representative sort of firescape garden, can incorporate the plants for a fire savvy landscape, because that was also something that came out of, you know, the garden club while including color. But, you know, I hope that we can, to the extent those plants are incorporated, we can have a little plaque or a sign or just some educational aspect. Small ones, not expensive, big ones. But also with the sign, I'm really grateful that, you know, I think ultimately we have to have a balance and the cost involved with this is, is the right amount, right? And that it's, it's not a $120,000 sign or $150,000 sign. And maybe we could get more of a, a art, artistic piece with a similar cost, but there's a whole range of additional issues with that. I do love the idea of mosaic and would love to see, you know, that, that kind of mosaic art in, it's, you know, there's so much beautiful art in our community and I'd love to see that continue. And maybe pieces can be incorporated into this area, but, you know, I, again, I'm, I'm very grateful for the ad hoc committee, for your work, Vice Mayor Iverson and Councilmember Riley and to staff. So thank you to our entire Public Works and, and Park staff for their work on this.
Can we also say thank you to the garden club?
Oh, my goodness.
I think, yeah, I think we are very, very fortunate to have such a wonderful group of people that really care about making our community look attractive. And I, I, I do think that's a benefit to all of us. And so I, I think that's, and I do think that the fact that the garden club has been so willing to step up is just really admirable and I really appreciate it.
That I could not agree. I think the reason we are, we, I, I at least feel very comfortable with the landscaping without seeing what it's going to look like, but just hearing the concept is because knowing the garden club is involved. That's what gives me the faith in this because of, of how lovely landscaping has been around the library plaza.
But, but it starts with the landscaper we hired. And then two people came in with, you know, a viewpoint and their viewpoint was heard. So it's an integration of the garden club's viewpoints, which.
But knowing the garden club.
Yes, I think it's going to be happy. I think it's going to be happy.
Has a seat at the table.
Like, I want to say again, like all gardens, you're happy today, but you got to keep working on it. You're going to have to keep maintaining it. You're going to have to spruce it up, fluff it up. Yeah, we got to keep fluffing.
It's hard to follow that.
Takes longer to fluff.
I'd love to add just a few tiny comments. One, I do like the welcome to, just because I really liked it in the original Finn design. I don't have strong feelings. So if people want to say city of Arinda or just Arinda, I thought the welcome to was nice. I would like to ask if they can at least look at a little bit of that, that kind of elegant accent that we had in the original. I thought that elevated it a little bit. And on the subject of public art, we really looked hard at having a very small and simple sign and actually having there be a kind of a rotating art in public places installment, installation there. And what we realized is that because PG&E has to approve anything that goes there, that approval process would be for any piece of art. And so that is an ongoing thing. We will continue to look at, but just know there's a constraint that we decided to get this right. And then the art would be opportunistic, but we didn't want to be reliant on it. And my final point is I'm going to make a minority report here on the landscape being fire savvy because this is not home hardening that we're doing as a role model project. And I think this should be as beautiful as it can be. And so I feel less strongly than the mayor about it being exemplary of our fire savvy landscape. And I would love for it to just be as whatever the landscape designer and the working group want to do. So.
Okay, I, that, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, actually. And I, I do want it to be beautiful, but I, yeah, hoping we can incorporate it.
Well, like I said, it's not a demonstration garden. So you're not going to get, you know, this ideal fire savvy garden. You will get drought tolerant and you'll get color.
I, I also do like the welcome to. I was wondering if anyone had different views because I like it, but I also don't have strong feelings about it.
I like the welcome to.
I like it.
I like it. And then in terms of the, the font, I did, I also do, I do like the version that was a little more art deco, if that can be incorporated. I, I don't feel like, oh, I'm comfortable with proceeding with a recommendation and not having it come back to the council. I'm comfortable approving it. But I do like the idea of it being, you know, I think that, as the vice mayor suggested, that appeals to me more as well. And it's consistent with one of the comments we got.
If there's consensus on that, we can certainly obviously make the ask of Arrow if they could try to replicate it to the greatest extent possible. If not, we could lean back on the proposed recommendation with the fonts that we're showing you.
And can the two of us look at that new proposed etched lettering, if there's such a thing?
And as long as the, I, I think the council, if you're comfortable with them continuing until that concludes, and then we will conclude the ad hoc after that.
I would very much appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable having the ad hoc committee determine the appropriate lettering style.
I'd, I'd love to bring forward a motion to approve. Nobody has commented as to whether they like the recommended option one, so I'm hoping that was inferred, but I will bring forward a motion to do the recommended option with the more kind of the red, brown granite, this primary silver lettering and the budget as approved. I mean, as presented.
And also. I'll second it. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item H2, which is the infrastructure committee date extension.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, two members of this council, the mayor and Councilmember G have been working tirelessly over the last year and a half to come back with recommendations at a future date to the city council regarding things that we could be doing to help improve our roads, our private road issues and our storm drain issues. The infrastructure committee has been meeting pretty regularly. I want, I would love to say once a month, but pretty close to that. Holidays notwithstanding, but there are still some outstanding items that are part of the work program. And the completion of the private storm drain mapping is still underway, along with the committee's work on developing out policy options for the council's consideration around private roads. We are, the committee is recommending that a term extension until the end of 2026 be considered by the full city council in order to complete those tasks. I would argue potentially that we don't need the entire 2026, maybe to come back with some policy options for consideration, but certainly wanted to give ourselves the flexibility in order to do that. The committee obviously can speak to any updates that you want to share from the committee and the work that we've been doing. So I'll turn it back over to the mayor and Councilmember G to do that. But I think for us, we just wanted to get the extension decision made as well, because the next time we're scheduled to meet would be in January.
Okay. Anything either one of us can add? I'm happy to, or, okay, wait, I'll chime in and then, okay, go ahead. You go first.
I, I think again, the city manager did a good job of explaining that there just are still some things in motion that were part of our work plan that are not completely wrapped up. I think most of you know, and hopefully have had a chance to take a look at the questionnaire that we did as part of the work plan. It is posted on our, our website. So you can take a look at all the feedback we got there. I would say that the, I think the time invested in it in what has happened so far has been valuable in the sense that I do, I do believe at, at the end, the, the city and the, and our public work staff are going to have much better mapping available to them of our, a lot of our drainage. And I also think that it's been a very, I think it's been a very good forum for conversation with the community. I don't think I've ever gotten as many thank you emails or conversations with people that have just been pleased that we've been willing to provide a forum to talk about possibilities. So I, I just wanted to emphasize that I think that it's been, it's been very well received. And even though there are a lot of strong feelings within the community about the topic, it is a longstanding set of issues that, that I think are going to, you know, myself and the mayor can testify how she feels, but I think are, are issues that, you know, have been with us for a long time and have, and are going to continue to be with us. So I think it has been a positive exercise in trying to, and trying to improve things within the overall community, given that infrastructure is such an important part of our city. So.
Thank you. I, I completely agree with everything Councilmember G said and just want to add, you know, as to the storm drain mapping, I think is a really important piece of this. And we are finding in our, one thing that we learned at our last meeting that was maybe, Councilmember G, with her expertise, professional expertise, anticipated this more than I did. But, you know, we, we are finding that our, this mapping has resulted in not just understanding where the drains that are on private properties are and, but also there's additional mapping that we're seeing for public store property, storm drains on public property, which is really important in an area with the sort of terrain that we have in, in Arinda. And, you know, and then for years, there's been this ongoing debate about the condition of private roads, right? And the condition of public roads. And folks really were talking, I think, at each other without hearing each other. And we're being somewhat speculative about, you know, this data. And so having that data, I think, is really important in part because it lets us have a discussion based on a set of common, common facts, right? And that, that's the basis of where you can start having these intelligent discussions. And, you know, I do think that having the, having this be a really much more of a discussion forum in the committee has been really helpful engaging with, with the public because in a, in an issue where that was, I personally felt was starting to just become really adversarial and hostile and, you know, is now, I think that, I think that some trust has been built. I hope that it has. It has from my perspective. And I think that that, building that trust and continuing to move towards a solution, even if it's a very long term solution, even if it's a very slow solution, continuing to move towards a solution and having the discussions helps, help, will help with also, you know, our community supporting long term funding of infrastructure, which, which I think we will probably need. I hope there's a day that we don't need to tax ourselves to fix our roads and drains, but, you know, and, and do our wildfire permission and other things that we want to do here. But for now, I, I don't know that we're going to be free of that burden, you know, in 15 years, right? And so I, I think we probably won't be. And so it's important that, that we build the credibility and the trust and work long term now. So to that end, I think that continuing this towards the end of 2026, you know, even if we don't need, we may, I, I'm hoping we're able to come back to the council before the end of next calendar year, but just to have the ad hoc, I mean, the committee that continue, I think, would be helpful. I don't, we're still on reports, so that's my information report. So I will now open public comment on this item unless there's any more. Oh, sorry. Yes, I do. So questions from the council. Councilmember Hoxsey?
I just want to thank you because I think it's really important that we've got this dialogue going and that we're doing the mapping. And very appreciative of the work you guys are doing to have the committee and I'm.
And I'm hopeful that we'll keep, keep going forward, but thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you also for all this must be, yeah, it's been quite a burden, I'm sure. Can you remind me where we are on the work plan, like what items are next for you guys?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're looking, so we've done the, the data, you know, assessment of, of the private road condition. We're in the process of joining the storm drain mapping survey. We've done the questionnaire, not survey, but questionnaire of individuals who live on private roads, asking sort of what they want, lots of questions, which it really is interesting to look at, the results. And we are looking at the resolution that was in existing resolution that frankly makes it almost impossible for anyone to dedicate a private road. And, and that, we're looking at funding sources. What else is on our agenda?
We're, we're asking staff to come back to us with some more information regarding what other communities have done in, in some of these areas. And in also exploring a little bit more of some of our own past history with some of the things the city is already doing, like the roads we're maintaining in Arinda Woods, and just looking back again at some of the thought processes that can help maybe shape what the committee comes back to with some policy recommendations.
We actually asked staff to come, come back with long-term policy recommendations. Okay, any other questions? Okay, with that, I want to open public comment. I don't have any speaker cards. Is there any, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on item H2? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. And the recommendation is to extend the term of the infrastructure committee to December 2026.
I easily support the extension of the subcommittee. Would also like to thank you for the just incredible number of hours that you guys have spent on this. And I also want to just tell you how much I appreciate that you share when there are reports or progress. I actually frequently will, you know, watch the video or I'll read the presentation. So I've just been, just so interested in how much you guys have been servicing and learning. So just really want to say thanks.
Well, I want to, I want to thank Councilmember G for great, I mean, for, for really addressing this issue. And I think it, you know, I always viewed it as sort of a, a hot mess in Arinda. And, you know, instead of running away from it or pretending it didn't exist, I think we're actually trying to understand it and address it. And I, I want to thank her for that. Any other discussion?
Again, thank you, and I fully support extending it.
So do you need a motion?
We need a motion to extend.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. And that takes us to item I, which is council members' reports. Who would like to go first? Anyone?
Well, we had an, we had an infrastructure subcommittee meeting, but I think we've literally touched on almost everything that was discussed was kind of the status and update of all of it, so. But I will say, I will say that we continue to have a pretty positive public participation. And over the course of the year plus that we've been doing this, we've gotten a lot of different community members to participate. So I think that's been a real positive as well.
Okay. Any other updates? I do have a few, but nope. I'll touch on some and then the city manager can chime in. We've had a few meetings, things happen since our last, last council meeting, most notably we had on the 29th of October, a wildfire prevention education night that we did in collaboration with MOFD and with our OUSD and our OUSD superintendent and the city manager and Chief Rossi and Chief Isaacs all spoke. And I think the content of the panel was great. We could always do, do better, but it was, it was great. Unfortunately, the attendance was really disappointing. I think it was, it was really disappointing. And so, you know, we've, I know the city manager and I have, have talked and sort of, you know, about how, what could be done better, but it was unfortunate that I think, you know, I think if we're gonna, doing this in collaboration with the schools, I think in the future, I would want to collaborate with the parents' clubs directly and really rely on that for outreach, as well as, of course, look at other ways that we as a city can, can improve our outreach. We, I think we're particularly, I was disappointed because my expectation was also that we would have a lot of attendance because we had great attendance at the first session that we held here in the, you know, that the city did. And the one thing we did with that in terms of outreach is we did mail directly a postcard to everyone's house. But we, in terms of the, you know, Arinda outlook and the social media outreach and all the other outreach we did, the city went ahead and did all that again. The only thing we did differently is we didn't do the postcard, but in this case, we were targeting sort of a different demographic, right? And so, you know, we have a lot of ideas on how to, I think, do that going forward and hopefully we'll implement them. I don't think that the idea of doing forums at schools is necessarily something that we should give up. I just think that if we're going to do it, or when we do it, we need to maybe stay on top of that outreach and work directly with the parents' clubs again. But the content was good and it's recorded, so hopefully we can, we can publicize it to the parent, you know, community. It was two days before Halloween too, and rainy night and, you know, wildfire is not top of mind for folks right now, though it's a good time to prevent it. So that's my report on that. And then apart from that, we had a few events happening this weekend. We had the La Marinda Arts Council celebrated their 75th anniversary. And that was lovely and it was, it was, I was able to attend. It was that they were in the theater and it was a great recognition of how much they do for our community. And that recognition continued into the evening last night at the Arinda Community Foundation's Citizen of the Year Awards banquet, where Maggie Bosco, former Del Rey music teacher and incredible contributor, who sort of launched the Artify Arinda and so many things, was honored as Citizen of the Year. And Carlos Beltonado was honored as Volunteer of the Year. And then a young man who had volunteered 98 hours, Rhydian Daniels, who's a student at OIS in the others first thing in sixth grade, he volunteered 98 hours to do outreach and education for Children's Hospital UCSF and for Children's Miracle Network. And just really an incredible young person. So they were all there. The council member G and I both attended, and our supervisor Candace Anderson was also there. And proclamations came from everyone else, including us. So that was lovely. Anything else to add? You were at the event.
No, it was just, it was a lovely event and to be able to recognize Maggie and Carlos and Rhydian, our young student, it was, it was really nice. And I, I think we have all experienced so much of what Maggie has contributed that it was very, very nice to see the celebration of everything that she has done for Arinda.
And I'm probably forgetting something else, but the city manager will, will fill me in as we move on to our city manager's report.
I'll keep it very brief. We've had, we've got an upcoming event this week, Light Up Arinda, working in conjunction with the Arinda Association, right?
No, Arinda Community Foundation.
The Arinda Community Foundation in partnering with them to host the kickoff event in the library plaza. So we've been meeting with them to make sure we have a wonderful evening on Thursday. And so come join us for that. And then next, or December 5th, we have Winterfest here and this, at the community center. So we're excited to bring back Winterfest for another year. And information is available on our website for the residents who want to come out and join us for that kickoff to the holiday season.
And there's one other event I'm going to announce, which is the La Marinda Atelier, which is a new business, has a ribbon cutting this Friday, November 7th at 6:00 PM. And that address is 2 Theater Square, Suite 112. And then our, the Northern California Sister City Conference has their regional meeting in Arinda at the Wilder Art and Garden Center on Saturday morning, November 8th. And one other thing, which is the La Marinda Arts Council has an opening of their current exhibition and their reception is November 15th, which I believe is out here in the library gallery, and it's going to be in the afternoon. Information on their webpage.
We also have an upcoming subcommittee meeting on Wednesday night for our regular ongoing coordination with MOFD.
That is correct, yeah. And that'll be at 6 o'clock.
So a lot going on. Okay. Any, item K is matters initiated? Any matters initiated tonight? Okay. With that, that will take us back into closed session. And the closed session matters that I previously identified that we are resuming in closed session. We need to, city manager, I mean, city attorney, do I need to identify those again if I did earlier?
I, I can do it quickly. There's a city manager performance evaluation and conference with labor negotiators, negotiators also related to the city manager. If there's any public comment, this would be the time.
I have no speaker cards. Would anyone like to speak on our closed session matters? Hearing none, I will close a public comment and we will go into closed session. Thank you.